President.
Councilwoman Austin.
Here.
Councilman Baum.
Howdy.
Councilman Wishing.
Here.
All right, will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would entertain any amendments to tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I would make the following motion to make these amendments to the agenda. Under item two, add a C regarding information regarding the Vets Roll Event. And under New Business, add a number J, the Park Master Plan Update Proposal. No, wait, sorry, L. An M, Pack and Trail Engineering Services Proposal. Or Park and Trail, sorry. Can't read tonight. And an N, Temp Road Closures for the Brew Fest. I would also like, under Additional Other Business Discuss EDC Funding. So it'd be an LMNN.
Ms. President, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. All right, up first, under Presentations, we have a presentation by HWC in regards to the TAMP and SAMP. And I'll let you explain what those acronyms mean.
How y'all doing this evening? I'm gonna apologize upfront for all the acronyms that you're gonna hear. So, I'm up here to present two projects we've had the pleasure of working on for you all over the last couple of months. One is a PAMP, which is a Pavement Asset Management Plan, and the other is an SAMP, which is a Sidewalk Asset Management Plan. To start with, both of these studies were conducted as a tool to help you all with future decision-making on infrastructure investment. So, the Pavement Asset Management Plan was a study that was conducted under the guidance of the local technical advisory program, which is run through Purdue University and N.L.TAP. And it's based on a system called PAZER, again, another acronym, which stands for Pavement Surface Evaluation and Rating System. And basically, long story short, is it was a systematic assessment of your current roadway infrastructure based on current pavement condition, visible pavement condition. And the PAZER system is basically set up as a rating system, and it's scaled from one to 10, one being the worst and 10 being the best. There's a breakpoint in the system where four, anything rated at four or below is basically considered critical distress point, which is something that has to be addressed pretty quickly. And anything above a five is something that would basically be able to be maintained with just regular maintenance program or something like that. So, anything five and above would be, you know, sealing and crack sealing and, you know, things like that. Long story short, the results of the Pavement Asset Management Plan indicated that you guys, about 78 percent of your overall roads in the town are in good shape, which is good. Now, the Pavement Asset Management Plan and following PAZER is important because it leads you to other funding sources through NDOT. There's a program out, a matching program, I'm sure some of you have heard of the Community Crossings Matching Program through NDOT. So, this Pavement Asset Management Plan allows you to be able to qualify, to apply for funding assistance through those programs for roadway repairs and updates. So, it's good news. Good news is you're 78 percent good or above, and then you have, but now you have a roadmap or a plan, no pun intended, for being able to prioritize and then seek funding and make repairs. So, it's a long-term strategy for you all to be able to manage your assets and infrastructure improvements well. So, related to that, and what we did concurrently with that was the Sidewalk Asset Management Plan. That study, there was no PAZER system set up for sidewalks, so what we ended up doing was setting up a custom rating system based on PAZER, because that's an industry-recognized system. But we, you had a custom system that allowed us to go out and physically inventory each and every sidewalk and trail in the community. That's unique for most communities in this state. They're starting to do that, but most of them haven't done it to the level that you guys have now, so that's good. You now know, through our work, what you have, where it is, and what condition it's in. That study, the result of that, and that process really is a three-step process that we used for the Sidewalk Asset Management Plan. First step was an inventory where we physically walked every single road and gravel road, driveway, and evaluated all of your existing trails and sidewalks. Physically evaluated the system, spent about two or three weeks on the ground here around the community, just inventorying everything. And then, we took that back to the office, and second phase was kind of quantifying the condition and the results of that. And then, the third phase, which we're really kind of in the midst of right now before we completely wrap up, the Sidewalk Asset Management Plan, is prioritizing the results of that, the recommendations in the project. So, at the end of that plan, when you have that in your hand, you'll be able to see, again, just like the Pavement Asset Management Plan, you're gonna have a roadmap for what needs to happen where for your sidewalk infrastructure investment. And when I say sidewalks, that includes trails, so it was concrete and asphalt, side paths, if you will, and all of your ADA curb ramps and ADA access, since ADA compliance is critical now for communities that are seeking federal funds and just in general. So, the results of the sidewalk inventory really, were really phenomenal. So, overall, you had, there were over 53 miles of trails and sidewalks that were inventoried, and, again, those were using the PAZER-like system, so a 1 to 10 rating system, and only less than a mile, really, were rated at below good condition. So, that's, you know, anything in that four to five range and lower. So, I mean, 99-point-whatever percent of your sidewalks and trails were in good or better condition. I think even more importantly, though, you had 52 miles, 97 percent, that we rated at good to excellent condition, so that's anything above an eight. And the only way you get a 10 is if it's brand-new. So, you can get a 10 one time, and if it's brand-new, anything that's been in for over a year goes down to a nine and lower. So, that's important to note. One area for you guys to recognize, though, is when we got to the curb ramps. So, we inventoried a total of 788 curb ramps in the community. 462 of those are what we would consider compliant based on the system we put together. And those really, that really means that they're in full compliance with all ADA standards accessible for wheelchair. However, you did have 183 curb ramps that were basically rated as non-compliant. Now, they were non-compliant but navigable, which means there may be some standard, it may be a cross slope, it may be something technical that it didn't meet that technical requirement, but it's still navigable, which means somebody in a wheelchair could functionally use that ramp. So, it doesn't meet brand-new current ADA standards, but it's still usable. You did, however, have 103 ramps in the community that were considered non-compliant and non-navigable, which means they, you had a curb ramp and it didn't go anywhere, you may have had a gap between a curb ramp and a sidewalk because the sidewalk's not complete. It may have slope issues, it may have been a ramp that was built a decade ago, and it just does not meet current ADA requirements. So, that's just something to keep in mind. And, just like we did with the PAMP, the SAMP is gonna help you identify where those are at, and then we're gonna work with Jason and the town to try to prioritize where those investments would occur. So, overall, we looked at 40, almost 41 miles of actual sidewalks, and then you guys have around, let's see, 12.5 miles of trail. So, and 12.1 miles of those are in very good, excellent condition of the trails. So, with that, I'm kind of, my brief summary and all my acronyms, I'm happy to take questions or any additional comments you'd like.
What's your SAM, and you talked about the ADA ramps?
Yes.
Does the map show places where they're needed or which just exist?
We have a map, and I don't have a clicker, I thought we had.
I always look at it.
There were a couple of maps that were up here. There's a series of maps in the actual report. One of the maps inventories all of your curb ramps, and it shows the ratings, so it's color-coded, green to red, pretty simple to understand. So, anything in the greens and blues are gonna be good to excellent, and anything in the kind of the orangey and red area will be red or critical. It also notes a couple of places where there, you may have a sidewalk, but there's just no ramp, so there is a rating there for no ramp present. That was a couple of them, so. Yeah, long story short, yes, there is a map that goes along with that, and it's...
I saw the map, I just didn't know whether it was showing the ones where we may need ramps that...
It did indicate that, and I think we did have that, there's gonna be a lot of backup documentation, and all those are inventoried, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other question?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to work on this. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, 2B, under Presentations, is Nationwide Retirement Benefits.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to give you guys a little bit of a background here, before Kevin starts here, at the Fire Department, we're looking into additional investment possibilities for retirement, investing and planning. And we started looking around, talking to other different entities. A lot of people that we talked to were happy and overly excited with Nationwide. So, we approached Nationwide and talked to them. They actually service all different kinds of entities, but to give you an example, Indianapolis, Pike, Beech Grove, Zionsville, West Lafayette, and so on and so forth. So, we brought it together, we pushed it to Dax to see if it was something we could present to the council. So, tonight, he's gonna kind of go through all the nuts and bolts, I'm not even gonna attempt to delve into any of that, and explain what we would like the council to consider for the town.
Thank you for your time. My name's Kevin Mitchell. Nationwide Retirement, you may have heard of Nationwide with our extensive amount of marketing and commercials, Peyton Manning and such, but Nationwide is also the leading provider of 457 Deferred Compensation Plans throughout the country. We have over 8,000 different plans. We help more Americans prepare for and live in retirement than any other 457 deferred comp provider, so we're a very serious player in this space. One of the great things why people select Nationwide is our level of service. We are endorsed by the International Association of Firefighters, which is what we're getting an endorsement from, the firefighters. Civilian employees can take advantage of this plan as well, they can take advantage of the zero admin fee price that we're presenting to the town. The only fees that a participant would take part in would be the mutual fund expense ratios, which are clearly spelled out upon enrollment. So, our level of service is one thing that we promise to firefighters, since they do three different distinct shifts. We go to all shifts, all stations, twice a year. Civilians will have a slightly different plan, but during those three different days, we could also set up here during the town council meeting. Not necessarily during the town council meeting, but here at the council building. We have a representative that would be assigned to the town of Whitestown. We are salaried representatives, so we can assure you that we're not out to earn a commission and sell your participants any other financial products. We're here to educate and enroll and talk about the 457 to help them prepare for retirement.
Can you clarify what 457 is? Is that the unital equivalent of a 401K for those that might not know?
Yes, it is. A 401K is essentially the tax code for private sector companies. It is a place for participants like you and I, if we work on the outside, I work for Nationwide, we are a private sector company, I have a 401K where I can defer some of my paycheck up to $18,000 per year. So, you can defer that into a 401K. A 457 is the government version of the 401K, where employees have very similar rules, but there are some very distinct differences. One, there is no age difference or age requirement to withdraw your money, it's simply separation of service from the plan. Another, the aspect of that with a 401K, I or anybody in a 401K must wait until age 59 and a half to avoid the 10 percent penalty. There is no 10 percent penalty with governmental 457 plans. Does it help?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
When you say civilians, have the police looked at this or the other departments or whatever?
They haven't specifically looked at this plan, but they would be offered this plan along with town council members. So, if you're earning a paycheck, part-time town council civilian employees, you'll be offered this plan, the opportunity as another option than the current plan. So, you'll be offered the opportunity to enroll in the Nationwide Plan.
Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, 2C, under Presentations, Veterans Committee Updates.
Good evening, council members. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for organizing this committee. I think we're gonna be able to do some good things with it, I really do. The reason I came this evening is to talk about a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank all involved that came out for the Vets Roll Event. I don't know who got a chance to see it. Special thanks to the Whitestown Fire Department Chief. They were able to provide two fire engines, ladder trucks, with the garrison flag over Interstate 65 at the 130 exit, and then also provided a color guard to present colors over the 133 exit north of town, as well as, we had about 40, 40 or so participants from the community that came out and lined up on the interstate at the ICE Exchange, Indiana Car Exchange Auction, and the Indiana Patriot Guard Riders provided flags, stuck flags up in that whole section, and as well lined up about a quarter-mile of motorcycles. So, when they came through town, it was a pretty cool thing. So, I'd like to thank all involved with that. I'd like to really thank Tanya Sumner for her participation in making sure that everybody heard about this event, the media and such. We were covered by multiple media outlets, including WTHR, Channel 13, Fox 59 News, just a couple, there were many that covered the event, which was very nice. We hope to grow this event much larger next year with the help of the council and the community, and as soon as we have an update on dates, we will sure let the council know. With the, we also plan with the council's approval to set up a booth at the September 9th Farmer's Market with some information and donation boxes, maybe what we're about, seeking donations, I'll get with that later. Also, we have plans for the National Guard to bring in some bounce houses for the kids to play in, and maybe some static display vehicles that people can ask questions, and of course, it gives them an opportunity to recruit as well with that, so. And with the hopes of reminding everyone of the tragedy of September 11th, 2001, so that's, you know, that's really what we want to be there for, and in hopes to remember that tragedy and also make people aware of the Veterans Committee in town, and that we are here and we're gonna start making things happen. We're also hoping to do a Halloween Candy to Troops Drive in partnership with Carmen Dental at the end of the year, around Halloween time, hoping to get participation from the town on that as well, to take donations of candy and such items that can be shipped overseas to troops and care packages. So, we'll be looking for donations as well for that, and we'll probably place, with the council's permission, donation boxes around the local businesses after speaking with the management, to hope to receive donations for this gift-sharing for the troops. We will, the Patriot Guard Riders have dedicated the shipping for us already, and so we just will need a place to pack it and get it ready to ship, so we've got good things going there. I'd also like to just kind of discuss the possibility of doing improvements on the land that I understand was dedicated as a veterans park in front of the municipal building, which is obviously gonna require donations, which gets me back to the donations, getting with local businesses, and maybe setting a box up or such to seek donations and also speak with them, seeking donations. Other than that, any upcoming events that we have planned, we'll obviously step in front of the council and discuss it with you first and ask for your blessing. I'd like to thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to working with each and one of you on future projects. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for your leadership on this committee, and thank you for helping put together the Vets Roll Event.
No, it's wonderful, man. We, that's what we're here for. Brothers and sisters, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is the Clark Treasury Report. Any questions from council? Okay, moving on to item number four, Department Reports. Any questions or comments on any of the reports?
One thing, Chief.
Which Chief?
If you have an update on National Night Out.
Thank you. National Night Out's gearing up, it'll be the first Tuesday in August, August the 1st. It'll start at 4:00 PM and run through 8:00 PM. It's gonna be bigger and better than it was last year. Dax keeps challenging us to make it bigger, and I don't think we'll be disappointing anybody again this year. There's gonna be three very lucky kids this year that are gonna take something home with them from National Night Out that they'll be able to use and play with for quite a number of years to come in the future, so. Thanks to, we've had a very good fun drive this year, and so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty exciting evening, I think. We're just hoping that the rain holds off and that maybe the temperatures are not as high as they are. Currently, 30-day out forecast has us at 51 percent that day. I'm thinking it's gonna be 78 and sunshine. So, look forward to seeing you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we will move on to the Public Request to Speak section. I think actually, I have people signed up, but they're all under particular parts of the agenda, so we'll get to those as we go through the agenda. Item number six, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes, the June 21st, 2017 Regular Meeting Minutes, the June 29th, 2017 Special Meeting Minutes. Item B claims the June 2017 Expenses Town, the June 2017 Revenues Town, the June 2017 Utility Claims, which include water operating and wastewater operating, and C, the Whitestown Fire Department Pyramid School Attendee Agreement Form.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. Next, 7A, under Unfinished Business, Resolution 2017-21.
Town of Whitestown, Indiana, Resolution Number 2017-21, a Fiscal Policy Resolution for Annexing Contiguous Territory to the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, the Reinhardt Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-21.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Resolution is adopted, five to zero. 7B is Ordinance 2017-17.
Ordinance 2017-17, ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, Annexing Territory to the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the Town of Whitestown, the Reinhardt Super voluntary Annexation. Second reading, Mr. President, I'd make a motion we adopt Ordinance 2017-17.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. All right, 7C is Ordinance 2017-21, and we do have people signed up from the public to speak on this item, so we're gonna go through those first. And at this time, I would call up Carol Drake. And please try to keep the comments to five minutes.
Just as a point of order, is the applicant not speaking tonight? Because normally, we would follow the applicant, but...
The applicant has not...
Okay.
...signed up to speak.
Well, thank you. Mine...
Okay.
You want, I would yield to the applicant if you prefer.
It doesn't matter, either way.
I'll let Mr. Tuohy go first, then.
Okay, Mr. Tuohy.
She signed up first, I'm glad to have her go first.
All right, we'll go ahead with you, Carol.
Sounds good, thank you. My name is Carol Sparks Drake. I live at 4995 East, 450 South, where I have lived now for more than 29 years. As a point of order initially, on behalf of my husband, Tom, and myself, we renew our motion to dismiss, which was filed with you in this matter on June 9, 2017, and we hereby incorporate that letter by reference requesting dismissal of this cause prior to any action upon the substantive merits of the proposed ordinance. Without then waiving that objection, I would offer the following substantive comments. Whitestown is often in the news for being the fastest-growing community in Indiana. In large measure, this growth is due to the foresight and the decisions which you, the members of the Town Council, have made. With that growth, Whitestown has, I believe, made a concerted effort to distance itself from past less-than-favorable perceptions. You have the opportunity tonight to demonstrate an objective, professional approach to the amendment before you, or to rekindle the flame that developers get what developers want when they come to Whitestown, regardless of the impact on its residents. Quite frankly, this agenda item is as simple as that. The question is whether you're going to follow the law and keep the definition which has been in effect since prior to 2004, over 17 years now, and you're going to retroactively change that definition in a manner that adversely impacts residents. We earlier also filed with you a binder that I would incorporate by reference, and I would just call your attention to the material in that binder that we have found nowhere, nowhere in any of the communities which the applicant also develops, or anywhere else in Indiana, that defines the opening in the wall of a building as a loading berth. That's the dock door, as shown behind tab aid of the binders. This is a picture of the building that has been built just north of us, and I would submit to you that appropriately, under your definition, this concrete area is the loading berth. Under the Whitestown Unified Development Ordinance, which the PUD says is applicable, the loading berth is a reinforced concrete area that's a minimum of 12 feet by 45 feet, and that's this concrete area. It is not these doors in the side of the building. To approve this amendment, the applicable statute requires the council to pay reasonable regard to responsible growth and development. The amendment before you tonight does not further responsible growth and development. It pays no regard to the residential structures along 450 South that predate, predate the Anson PUD. The statutory criteria do not support approving this amendment. Nothing about good land use planning and development says that Whitestown should be the only municipality that goes on record that tells the world, we do not know the difference between a loading dock door... we do not know the difference between a loading dock door and a loading berth. You're being asked to carve out Anson from the definition of loading berth that is applicable throughout Whitestown. That's the definition when Duke Realty came to this area in 2004 that they said was applicable to the Anson PUD, and we believe they have not shown under the statute why that definition should be changed, why those of us who live within Anson should have a different definition for loading berths than the rest of Whitestown and the rest of Boone County. Last month, in talking about basketball courts near Walker Farms, Councilman Bohm recognized that quality-of-life amenities are important for Whitestown's residents. I would submit that moving semi-truck parking closer to our homes with their lights, their beep 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 24 hours a day, is not an amenity. Big boxes are prohibited within 600 feet of our northern property line. It is not consistent to change the definition of loading berth to permit the most egregious outside use associated with a big box to occur within the 600 feet where the big boxes are prohibited. You have much discretion in making amendments, but I would submit that it's an abuse and discriminatory to exercise it in the fashion you've been requested, and we respect the legal request that the definition of loading berth within Anson not be changed, and the provision rate trailer staging not be changed to move semis closer to our homes. I want to thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening and for your service.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have Becky Roberts.
Hi, I'm Becky Roberts, and I live at 5317 East, 450 South Whitestown, right across the street from this building. Every time I've come to a Town Council meeting or one of the meetings here, we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Every time I'm standing up there saying the Pledge of Allegiance, I hear liberty and justice for all. I feel like I am not getting liberty and justice that I deserve. If I was driving in Whitestown and I got a parking ticket because I was going over the speed limit, I might want to get the speed limit changed, but I would not get the speed limit changed before I paid that parking ticket. I might work on that, but if I got a ticket at that point, if I hadn't followed the rules, then that's my problem. I feel like Duke has not followed the rules, so now they're trying to get the rules changed. It is their problem. It is not your problem. It is not our problem. They knew what the rules were. They started out going to buy our house. They changed the rules. They didn't buy our house. They have done this on and on, and it's really just not acceptable. It's not acceptable for someone who's lived in a home for over 30 years to have to go to bed every night and think that one of these days, I'm going to not be able to sleep because I'm going to be hearing that awful sound that Carol said, day in, day out. I do not need lights in my bedroom anymore. I can find the bathroom. I can find where I'm going fine in the middle of the night because of the lights. So, I just would like you to consider not changing the rules because if the rules were okay, they wouldn't need to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lee Emmerich.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. I'm Lee Emmerich, and I'd like to defer to Tuie right now if I could.
Let's go, let's go ahead in the order that we're, that we're moving.
All right, and just so I know, the rules of this, I noticed were being timed. Is there a time limit that we...
Five minutes, yes.
Five minutes each?
Yes, that's on the, on the sign-up sheet that we have. Three to five minutes, and we're giving you the five.
All right, just want to make sure we don't overstep our boundaries here. All right, guys, thank you very much. My name is Lee Emmerich, and I live at 5361, 450, or East 450 South, and I'm here tonight to ask you as the Whitestown Town Council members to hear the concerns of our family as Anson developments move into our quiet rural neighborhood. Complete consideration was taken to continue to live in this protected residential area based on the very rules that you guys are being asked to change tonight that had to be followed in the PUD ordinance. The Anson Building 8A is not our immediate concern. Instead, we are concerned about the use of the south side of the building. While Duke had 2,000 acres to build this building, they chose to build it as close to us as possible. The planned activity on the south side of the building is what is in violation of the PUD. The PUD states, "All loading or unloading berths or bays within 600 feet of any protected residential area shall be located on the facade of the building that is the opposite of the protected residential area, except however, where such loading and unloading berths or bays are screened by an existing building." Therefore, there is insufficient space for any truck to park south of the building without being within that 600 feet protected residential area. Once a 45-foot to 53-foot trailer is placed on any, any one of the 35-plus loading docks on the south side, it's in violation of that 600 feet. All measurements have proven that to be true. The only exception allowed by, in the PUD, would be as if there were an existing building to screen that activity, which there is none. So, by definition, the entire south side of the Anson Building cannot be used for loading or unloading or staging of trailers unless the rules that were to be followed are changed tonight. So, the issue in question tonight is the definition, the very definition of loading berth or bay. The question is, is it just a hole in the wall, or does it include the space that a truck will occupy? The Whitestown Unified Development Ordinance states that it is the off-street area required for the receipt or the distribution by vehicle of material or merchandise. Another section of Whitestown UDO provides, "The loading or unloading berths must include a 12-foot by 45-foot loading space with 14-foot height clearance." Browning Duke's proposed new definition of the loading berth is that this will be the opening in the facade, the hole in the wall. This is an unprecedented definition, not used anywhere else, meant to serve their purpose to change the rules for their benefit. As a former trucking company owner, this is absolutely absurd. I can attest that the loading berth is where the truck sits, not the hole in the wall. Ladies and gentlemen, we already have perfectly good English words for this definition. The words are window, door, buckout, or garage door. The PUD did not use this language or these words for a very specific reason. It's because the loading berth means much, much more than just a hole in the wall. As a homeowner, husband, and father of four children, and living within the rules and the laws of this land, it is not much to ask for Duke to do the same. As our elected officials, I must assume that you are often caught in the middle between new business revenue and the effects on the residents all the time. While this is an issue that only affects four families now, failure to uphold their end of the contract does not bode well for the future developments. How far will they try to go? The potential that Duke Browning will be building on all three sides of my home is imminent, and we fear that this is a precedent that will be set, that will be negatively impacted not only to us but our entire community by allowing the builders to determine the plans for the land and not the voting residents. The intent of the PUD was to protect us from the potential adverse effects of our new business neighbors. The language in the PUD specifically addresses this concern violation of building use in proximity to protected residential areas. We welcome development all day long, and we're excited for changes, but if Whitestown cannot be preserved by the agreement of the PUD in the beginning, the future Whitestown is in the hands of the developer and not the governing body of the people. I want to thank you for your consideration in this matter as you consider changing your determination for the violation of Duke. Per PUD ordinance, the pure intent of the ordinance, we respectfully request that you honor the initial agreement whereby only the truck berths on the north side will be used for loading berths, and we do not feel that this is unreasonable as a request, as Amazon, which is right next door, functions in the same manner. Now, all this being said, I don't want to stand up here and sound like we're completely stubborn and, and say nothing will, will be acceptable to us, except completely shutting down one side of the building. I'm a businessman. I understand the potential millions of dollars lost by not being a truck, a cross-dock operation, but I want it to be perfectly clear that we did everything we could before the construction of this continued. We don't want this to happen again, and that's what we want to be most clear of, but now that it has already happened, we are negotiable. I feel like several of the neighbors here are negotiable with what they can do with the space since it's already here. We're open to negotiations such as taller fences to block the sound and light from the berm that is insufficient due to the proximity of the building itself, or shutting down the south entrance of the building and rerouting all traffic through the north side to keep the jake-brake noise and the, you know, the brakes and the, and all the light and noise further away from us as far as possible, and there are several other additional things that we can consider down the road. However, these negotiations are not why, why we are here today. Today, Duke is asking you to change the definition of loading berth to the current definition of a garage door. This is what we all have in our homes. Who would say that a garage door is the same as a driveway? Just, just as we have different terms for those, we have different terms for loading berths. The driveway, it's a buckout, which is the hole in the wall. It's not the loading berth, and we ask again that if you hold strong to the intended language of the PUD and make a stand against Duke's intent to change the definitions in their favor, Whitestown will be a much better place to live in. I appreciate your time, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Drake.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Drake, and I live at 4995 East, 450 South Whitestown. Again, I want to thank for the opportunity to be before you this evening and for the service you provide to Whitestown. Why are we here tonight? Of course, you've heard it, but let me repeat it again. Carol and I have lived in our home for nearly 29 years, and we've seen a lot of changes, and it's already been said, we're, we're not against development and change, but we are going to be impacted by this decision that's before you, if you approve it. Again, it's been said, it's, it impacts us with growing intensity of light, noise, traffic, backbeeps, safety issues, all these things that will affect our sleep. It just so happens that 500 lights go right in our bedroom now, but it's going to increase the intensity of all of that if you allow this change to be made. The other thing that's often said is, well, you have berms. I mean, what do you want? Well, berms were never the intended solution to the problems. They are helpful, and we're glad for berms, but if you came out and were with us for a short while, you realize that the berms, however helpful, but in terms of the PUD and respecting those that live near, it was the berms plus the distance back, and sometimes the height of the buildings and what they could do. It's a whole combination. It's not just the berms or the distance, but it's a combination to respect homeowners around the development. So, that's why we're here, because of the consequences of that decision to us and to our neighbors, and to future neighbors. Number two, you're being asked, and again, you know this, but I'm going to say it one more time. In the PUD, it says that these buildings cannot be closer than 600 feet. Now, when they said that, it's clearing that the building plus the loading berth, that whole combination cannot be closer than 600. It's not just the building, but the, what they're asking you to do is to collapse the loading berth into the building. Say it doesn't exist. Redefine it as this doesn't exist. We've already shown you pictures. We explained that. That's crazy. That the, the loading berth, everybody knows what the loading berth is. It's defined, we've given you books that define it for Boone County, for Whitestown, for Indianapolis, for all the Donut Counties, for all the other cities in Indianapolis, and we can't find any place in the United States that defines it the way that they're asking you to change it. Nowhere in the United States that we can find. Although, there could be someone out there that has one or two differences. So, it's just contradictory inner definitions that we can find. Thirdly, why are you now being asked to do this? What, why? Why are you being asked to change this? This has been on the books for, since 2014. Well, it's because there's a building that's been built, 8A, which is, with the loading berths, is within the 600 feet. So, it creates some problems for Duke. And so, with that, when a mistake has been made somewhere in the approval process, a mistake was made by somebody. I don't know who, I don't know why, but it was made. So, here we are tonight, that the building is within, and so you have a result. When there's a mistake made, you can admit it, and as said, try to, to do some negotiating and try to work out the consequences, or you can say, no, we didn't make a mistake. There's no mistake here. Everything is fine. But, when you do that, what you have to do is, if there's no mistake, then you have to go back in and redefine everything, and that's what you're being asked to do. There was a mistake, so now either there's a consequence. But if you redefine it, there's no consequence to Duke, but to the neighbors, a big consequence. So, what, what, which, what are we doing now? There was a mistake made, and there's a consequence, and you're being asked to change everything so there's no consequences to Duke with this. So, I think that's why we're really here, because we, we're, the PUD's fine. We're living there, and we've not, we're not complaining about anything. So, finally, I just want to speak to one more thing, which has been presented. I'm not sure what Mr. Tuie is going to talk about, but I, I will say that he has presented at other meetings, this narrative, this long narrative of approval process. If this group approved it, and this group approved it, and this group approved it, and your planning commission approved it, and everybody approved, it can't be wrong. If, if everybody's approved, I mean, there, there can't be a mistake here, right? Well, that, what he'll present tonight, but that's been the narrative, and I, I don't, it's just not true. Mistakes were made. People made mistakes, honest mistakes, but they're made. People make them. And so, the idea that because it's been approved by all these people, that, that a mistake wasn't made, no, it was. I don't know why and how, but I just want to leave that mistakes can be made. The people who are making decisions on these, someone set that building in a certain place, and then it began to be approved, and other people approved it, who maybe their approval was, they, that wasn't their area of expertise. So, these things happen, and I, I want to say again, just, all working in business, I don't know about you, but I've had situations where my boss's boss's boss made a decision that I didn't think was right, you know, but I ended up approving it. You know, I ended up being convinced. I wasn't the one who made the decision, and I was asked to enforce or approve it. I wanted to keep my job. I wanted to do that. So, I've seen approvals made in my own business experience, and I assume you have too, and whether, it doesn't matter the authorities, all the approvals and the commissions, and the credentials, and all those things. They're important, and I'm sorry this has happened. I'm sorry there's a mistake been made, but it has.
Can you please wrap up?
Okay, yeah, well, yes, I will. And, and so, in closing, I just want to say that, do we have to pay for the mistakes of others? And finally, I'm asking that, don't let Whitestown be the only city that we can find in the country that defines loading berths the way that you've been, that you've been asked to change, because this is just not right, and it impacts the neighbors and others for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tuie?
Mr. President, members of Town Council, good evening. Thank you for hearing our side of this matter. My name's Brian Tuie. My address is 50 South Marine Inn, and on behalf of Browning Duke, we greatly appreciate your considering this side of the case from Browning Duke. To sort of go back a minute, members of the Town Council, a couple of themes that I think were said tonight was that there was a violation of rules, and that this was discriminatory, and that someone made a mistake. So, I realize I only have five minutes, and I won't exceed it. Let's, but let's go back for a second. This building that's been erected is a $30 million investment. It was approved by the planning commission in 2014. It was approved by the planning commission in 2014, in the summer of 2014. So it was approved three years ago. It was built starting in the summer of '16 and finished in late fall, early winter, late fall '16, early winter of '17. And as part of that approval, there was a certificate of occupancy issued to Browning Duke back in January. And at the bottom of the certificate of occupancy, which is dated January 24th, it says, "The structure described herein has been inspected and found to meet the requirements of the codes adopted and enforced by the town of Whitestown, Indiana, as of the date above." So there wasn't any violation of any rules. Back in 2014, a planning director, the then-planning director, I think her name was Ms. Lazir, looked at this very closely, where these loading berths would be located, because they were on both sides of the building. The building got approved, and it was built exactly as it was shown to the planning commission. That's why they got a certificate of occupancy that said it met all the codes. The folks that are opposed to this have been opposed to development along that stretch. We understand that. But they didn't object back in 2014. And then when it got built, the first thing they objected to was it was built too close. So your now-planning director, Ms. Bailey, says, "We got to check that out." And what they did is they measured it, and what the ordinance says is that building, not loading berths, but a building, has to be 600 feet away from that district. They had a precise survey done, and that building was more than 600 feet, and today is more than 600 feet, from that protected residential district. What they want to do is say that attaching onto that building is some undefined space of loading berth. But they want to also, they always want to ignore the words that were in the ordinance that said, "Loading berths or bays within 600 feet of any protected residential area shall be located on the facade of the building." In the Anson PUD, loading berths were referred to as a facade. So they appealed that. They appealed the, they said, "This building is in the wrong place. These loading berths aren't compliant." And they, and Ms. Bailey, the planning director, made a determination, "No, it does comply. It meets the ordinance." So they appealed that, and they appealed that to your town's Board of Zoning Appeals. And when they appealed that to the town of, the Board of Zoning Appeals, they, there was a hearing this fall, or the spring in February, and the BZA voted unanimously, unanimously, to confirm that this building met the standards of the Anson PUD. They weren't done with that. They weren't done. They're talking about violating rules. They believe we violated rules. They appealed that to a court. So in an effort to make this absolutely clear, we filed the petition that's before you tonight, before the planning commission. And the planning commission, in April, it was first heard that, hey, these folks, they don't have jurisdiction to even bring this up. And so we modified our petition and said, "We're only applying it to the two industrial areas, the Interstate Commerce District and the Commerce District." And so the planning commission sent it on to a review committee, and the review committee heard it in April. They unanimously made a recommendation to the planning commission to approve this text amendment. So then we had another hearing before the planning commission in May, on May 18th.
Can I ask you to make sure you're using the microphone?
I'm sorry.
That's why I have this thing.
Thank you. I apologize. So we had another hearing on May 18th. The planning commission, like the special committee, like the Board of Zoning Appeals, all voted unanimous to recommend approval to clarify this issue. So let's walk back what happened. We had a planning director in 2014 approve this building. We had a plan commission in 2014 unanimously approve this building. We then have a certificate of occupancy issued by the town that says the building meets the ordinances. We had someone object to that. They appealed that objection to the BZA, and the BZA said, "No, we agree with the planning director. This building meets the ordinances." Then we went through another set of plan commission meetings and a special committee meeting of this plan commission, and they unanimously, both that committee and the plan commission, said, "You know what? Let's amend this ordinance so this issue never comes up again."
Can we wrap it up? Mr. Tuohy?
Yes, Mr. President. Given this history, there hasn't been discrimination, there hasn't been rule-breaking, there hasn't been an effort just to ignore the Anson PUD. These folks have been responsible developers. They've built an enormous asset here, and they follow the rules. We'd appreciate if this ordinance would be passed tonight. Thank you for your time this evening.
So now we have ordinance 2017-21 in front of us.
Ordinance number 2017-21, an ordinance amending the I-65 Anson PUD text of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, few text amendments, PC 17-012-TA.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance 2017-21.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Moving on to new business, we have ordinance 2017-26, and we do have one person signed up to speak on this item, and it's Brendan Cavanagh. I'll invite you to come forward now.
Hello, members of the council. My name is Brendan Cavanagh. You have my address on file from various other times. I just wanted to voice my, in favor of ordinance 2017-26. As of lately, I'm sure everybody who lives in a subdivision has seen an absolute inundation of solicitors. This will help some legal recourse at least, and help control a little bit. I do appreciate the fact that you guys have the policy that a no-solicitor sign is essentially rule of law there, which is handy, and that the police force will provide a sign or sticker. That's very handy as well, very convenient. My only questions with the ordinance is, is there a timeframe that is on here for the solicitors, say like a 9:00 to 7:00 p.m. timeframe, that they can come by? And also, the exemption of fees. I appreciate all those who have served, but people are making money on the thing, and why shouldn't the town exempt certain persons for fees? With the exception of the nonprofits listed in the ordinance, which I also appreciate that you listed nonprofits, schools, and stuff like that, as I participate in many of them, and the kids especially, it's their only way of real fundraising. So I would just like you to consider those two questions, and thank you very much. I appreciate it, and you've done a great job on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2017-26, an ordinance establishing a solicitation policy in the town of Whitestown, Indiana.
This is what's keeping me up on Facebook till 1:00 in the morning now. It's the flavor of the week. And so we have gone through what we do now, and determined that we needed to do some new language. But I want, for the public's sake, while we're here, and this is being streamed and the press is here, to understand, I get this all the time, why can't we just ban solicitation? Why doesn't the sign at the front of the neighborhood work? Where most neighborhoods, they have a sign up front, and the HOA has placed there that says, "No solicitation." Steve can probably speak better than this than I will, so I'll give a layman's explanation, and maybe he can help. It's been ruled unconstitutional to do so. So in so many words, the Supreme Court and other lower courts have stated that you can't do a blanket ban of solicitation, am I on the right track? Basically, you can't tell some, you can't for the collective whole, say, "No solicitation," which that takes away the right of someone to go knock on a door and for somebody to answer the door and to enter into a business transaction. You cannot do that. Courts have stated that very clearly. What the courts have said is this, number one, they have a right to knock on your door; and number two, you have a right not to answer it. Number three, a lot of court cases I've read have basically stated that you don't know that that person has ill intent or a criminal intent. I've heard that many times in the cases I've read. So the courts have also stated that you have a right to place a sign on your property that states, "No solicitation." So they have a right to knock on your door until you, as an individual, tell them that you can't. But you can't do that in blanket fashion. So I hope that that clears a couple of things up for anybody who might be listening tonight. What we brought in front of you is an ordinance that we think will keep us out of the court system. So those court cases have also, and I want you to speak on the timeframes, because there are, yes, there are other communities that, Zinswell's one of them. It's 9:00 to 9:00 in their ordinance. Carmel, I believe, is 10:00 to 7:00. So there are a lot of other communities that have a time limit for solicitation. I think you and I have read the court's decisions pretty clearly, and timeframes concern us. But if you could speak to that, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and I would invite anybody that, there's a case out of Indiana, the town of Yorktown adopted an ordinance, and it was challenged with respect to the timeframe. The, I would say, if you're going to have a timeframe restriction, you can't just say, "We don't want to be bothered late at night," or "We're concerned about crime late at night." You actually have to have substantive evidence showing that there are crime issues that we are trying to address late at night in order to have a time restriction on what's essentially a free speech issue. So we've drafted this ordinance. I think any community that has a time, time place restriction on solicitation opens themselves up to a legal challenge, unless, again, there's very specific evidence of crime issues with solicitors late at night that they're attempting to address. So we drafted this without a time, place, manner restriction, and instead, what we're doing is requiring licensing so that we know who is soliciting. Supreme Court has seemed to suggest that that's appropriate, that you got to pay a fee if you can't have been convicted of a crime that involves dishonesty, those types of things, theft. But then if you are soliciting, you have to comply with the no-solicitation signs. And if you don't, you risk losing your license and being fined. So what we're essentially doing is enforcing people's choice to say, "I don't..." Their specific choice to put a sign up, put a sticker up that says, "No solicitation." We're going to enforce that, enforce that for them. And the Supreme Court's opinions seem to suggest that that is one of the least restrictive means, which is one of the standards when you're dealing with restricting somebody's free speech. People have a right to come knock on your door, and as Dax said, the way the courts look at it is, you have the right to tell them, "Go away." And if they don't go away, you can contact us, and we can come enforce that now, not as just a civil issue, but as essentially a civil penalty under our ordinance.
So I think you all need to think about this one. I think you need to think about, do we want to pass an ordinance that could be challenged in the courts? Do we want to take the risk, set some time limits, increase fees, and let somebody challenge it? Probably with the press here and speaking publicly like this, probably opening that door. Do we want to pass that type of ordinance and just hope that it doesn't get challenged, and hope that we don't end up in the, in local court system and then the federal court Or do we want to be cautious, start here? Let these people know that, now, we make, we make solicitors now come in and get a permit. They have to come in, they get a permit. You have to, you can, if you ask for it, they have to see it. This adds a little more teeth to what we're doing now. But we need to make a determination on, is it worth it for us to add additional language to our ordinance with the potential, as Steve said, of having a legal challenge? So as to protect our citizens even more, or do we pass an ordinance that we think is safe, based on the rulings of the Supreme Court and their First Amendment findings, and start the process of a little more enhancement of watching these solicitors to make sure that what they're doing is not criminal or a violation of privacy or noise ordinance or any other ordinance that we might have? So that's kind of where we are right now. It is a, it is a concern. We live in a different world today. Now, I would say that the majority of these people have found a job, thank goodness. This is their livelihood. This is how they get paid. This is how they feed their families. They're doing it legitimately. Their job is to go sell a product, and hopefully you knock on the door, and maybe someone will buy into that. And it's just the method that they use to sell that product. Door-to-door sales have been going on since we existed as a nation. I've done some research. It goes all the way back to colonial times. It still exists today. It seems to be that today, people are a little more concerned about crime, because crime is different today than it was saying 1950, 60, 70. Crime is different. There could be some people that aren't legitimate, that are truly casing homes. And if you're doing it after 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, you're, quite frankly, you're really bothering somebody. So that's what you need to, that's what we really need to determine, what do we really want to do ordinance-wise? Are we not afraid for a legal challenge? Are we ready for that? Because let's say it did get challenged legally, we just go back to something that the court would accept.
I think what we have in front of us, you know, ordinance 2017-26 is a real good start, based on concerns that we've been hearing from residents. And it's, you know, it's a constitutional way to do it, a legal way to do it.
I would agree with Council President Miller. It's a good place to start. We can always come back and readdress if we find an additional problem. The one thing I would ask, and Dax, this isn't part of the ordinance, but can we put up, once we get an ordinance like this, say, established, if the council agrees, can we put up some signs telling the solicitors they have to get a license or something? You know, something along the town board is saying, "Solicitors must have a license."
We can do whatever you approve. We can do whatever you approve to do.
More often than not, I get a solicitor at my door, and being a council member, first thing I'll ask, "Do you have the permit from Whitestown? We didn't know we needed to get one." Is their response. And I tell them, "Leave the neighborhood, go and get it, then come back." But it would be nice if we could point to that and say, "You should have known, because there's a sign that says you should have known."
Probably not a bad idea. You're listening to ESPN Radio, sir. It's a little bit strong tonight. It's okay. It's okay. You're not crazy. You're listening to a baseball game.
How many people come and get permits?
Who was in the hallway yesterday? Seventeen yesterday. A good company out of Florida, which this company, I received personal, private messages about these people from Florida, that they're suspicious looking, and they're aggressive, and they're blah, multiple different adjectives. Seventeen of them were in our hallway yesterday, waiting patiently to process their permits. They were legitimately here, trying to earn a living. They did their, they did what they needed to do. I know they've been in Zinswell doing the same thing. Are they annoying? Yeah, they can be really annoying. They can. If you answer the door, you're probably likely going to be annoyed. But they were, they did their job, they did what they should have done. So yesterday, it was seventeen alone. It's been a slew of them for the last couple of months. But this is just a time of year for them to be doing it up in the Midwest, before the weather breaks.
I think it's a good thing to know who's on our streets, so whatever the ordinance is, to encourage permits, not discourage permits, it's a good thing.
Jeff?
I think it's a good thing to know who's on our streets, so whatever the ordinance is, to encourage permits, not discourage permits, it's a good thing.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance 2017-26 a second time tonight.
I was hoping to talk with different residents of the district and make sure that they're good with this, just to give it a couple of weeks to make sure that everyone knows what's coming, so.
Okay, that's fine.
You want to withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
All right. Eight B under New Business is ordinance 2017-27.
Ordinance 2017-27, an ordinance establishing the service rates and charges for the collection and disposal of residential solid waste, trash, garbage, and refuse within the town of Whitestown Park Street.
Dax? So, if you remember, must've been last year about this time, we began the process of looking into outsourcing solid waste service for the entire town because we thought the economies of scale would give all of our residents a lower rate. Went through the process, you approved the process to go through a bidding process. We did that, and what you have in front of you, which I don't have in front of me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess and see if I can remember what the final rates were. Low rate was, I think, I think I got it. Low rate, low bidder was Ray's Trash Service. It's a five-year guarantee of rates. Starts at 10.60, am I right? How right am I? 10.55, how about that? Increases every year to the last year, I believe, is 11...
Fifty.
Fifty. So, in a five-year span, it goes from 10.55 to 11.50 are the rates. That's per month. We haven't found anybody that I've talked to yet in town that pays less than 10.60 a month or $30 and, $31 and, uh-oh, there goes my math skills. Whatever. Sorry. I went to Ball State. $31.80, I believe.
[laughing]
Per quarter. So, that, one thing that Councilman Russell asked me already is, is this voluntary? And this is where this gets, this is why this is first read tonight, okay? And this is certainly not something that we have to do as a community. This is just something we were doing as a, as an exploration to see if it would help the residents. And if it doesn't, then we've done that. We've explored, we've tried to get them a lower predictable rate across the board with a recycling center and two recycling bins per month, heavy trash pickup day, tox-away days. We've tried to bring that to town for the residents. If ultimately what is required of us and the residents does not work, then we just go back to what we're doing now. This is not a crisis by any means. This is not voluntary. It would not be a voluntary, you would pay this bill, everybody would pay the bill, and everybody would pay Ray's to be their trash service provider. And the reason why that happens is that Ray's can't make a guarantee to us for this rate and then all of a sudden have half of the community leave the process. Then the whole process falls apart, completely falls apart because they're basing it on a certain number of pickups and households. They're basing it on their economies of scale as well. So, that is the tricky part. We understand that. Like I said, if we determine that we don't want to move forward, we've tried our best to, because I've heard from multiple residents, my trash went up 65% to now it's $55, $60 a quarter, and, you know, one company, one person has Republic, and another one has Ray's, and another one has, you know, whomever else comes in and takes trash. So, that, that's what we have in front of you. And there are a couple of things I think that you should read over the next 30 days and consider. This would be, this would be a bill that is included on the utility bills. We would collect and then pay the company. So, we're just basically a collector for them. Doesn't make us necessarily, we may get a little bit of, of, we'll have, we'll get a little bit of the rate because there's a service fee for our staff to do the billing, which is understandable. I think we set that at 50 cents if I remember correctly. So, that's where we are with this program.
Right, because when we were discussing it before, we had mentioned that our HOA and our annual dues covers the trash. So, I don't know what ours, and I'm talking about Eagles Nest. So, like, there's, I don't know if there's any other HOA that's like Eagles Nest that does that or not, but that's just something we need to just understand how it'll impact everybody. So, if you're already on your own trash, then you, you know what this is, but if you're not, in theory, on your own trash, even though you're paying it annually, it's just not a number, it's just gonna change that for the...
When it came to pass that they ran a 500 in 1911, for reasons that they...
I don't know what that is. Hey, Glenn, we're having a malfunction.
When the first Indianapolis 500 was held...
I don't know what that is. Never heard that happen before. WIBC, folks. WIBC towers over here occasionally cause this problem.
Some of the advantages...
Thanks, Chuck. I'd like to introduce you to Chuck Willig.
[laughing]
He, he has, he has a knack for pulling things out of his hat, and don't believe that he had any idea that that was really real, that that would fix it.
And some, some of the advantages that we have with our trash collection in our neighborhood that's, that's paid for by the HOA, it's the one fee, it's paid once a year, and it's over and done with, is one, the second trash can is free.
And this, this is too, right?
And I see this is $65 at a raise. It's significant. That Republic is much cheaper on that. The other thing that we get out of ours is a one time a year, and in fact, I think they've extended it maybe twice a year, where as part of their contract, they'll bring in some dumpsters to the pool area, and anyone that wants to get rid of heavy trash, it's paid for, it's done. You just bring it and dump it in the, in the big dumpsters.
Doesn't this do heavy trash weekly?
It charges, though. It charges you $10 per item.
So, a couple of things. Number one, you'll get, anybody would get two trash cans or two containers, up to 96 gallons, or you could get a 64 gallon if you wanted. Some people don't want that big. You'll get one automatically. All you have to do is ask, and you'll get two. So, then you'll have two. And then you also get a canister, same size, 96 gallons, for your recycling. Trash will be every week, recycling would be every other week. You would get, you can pay, I think it's $2 for an overage bag on top of that. So, you could, you would pay Ray's directly, $2, or Ray's would have them here, and you'd pay us $2, and then you would, you could, you could go with a bigger bag or extra bags. You, bulky items, you get one free a month. So, everybody would get one free bulky item a month. So, if you had a, a refrigerator that you wanted to get rid of, for example, you would just have to call Ray's 48 hours in advance, and they would come pick it up once a month. You could pay, I think, $20, I think, is the fee under Ray's proposal. And Ray's was the low bidder. I mean, so they're gonna be the low bidder. If we're gonna work with somebody, it's gonna be Ray's, not Republic. So, it would be $20, I think, for each extra item that you wanted to pick up. You'll also get 20 bags, yard bags, a week in the fall and in the spring that they'll pick up on top of the trash and the recycling. And then, so in our, in our contract with Ray's, it's the potential for drop-off sites for recycling and additional bulky items, that's gonna be negotiated between the town and them on where the location is and the times. But they, but Ray's would have the right with negotiating with us to establish fees for what they'll do at those pickup sites. So, if you had significantly more items above and beyond the one item a month or something, you would have an ability to go drop it off somewhere else, but there might be an extra fee for that. It's just not in the schedules that we have right now.
Okay, and I misread the schedules, I'll be honest.
So, two, two free containers.
You'll, they'll give you one automatically.
You call in, you'll get another.
Say, hey, I, or just at the beginning, you need two. I mean...
One free recycling container.
Yes.
And then one item per month of bulk item.
Yes, and the fee for extra containers is actually, if you lose a container or damage a container, they have to give you an extra one, okay, for free, under the contract, the contract that we would sign that they bid on. If you go over that, so you break two containers, then you would have to pay that fee that's listed in the ordinance, which I think is $65. So, that would, that's a replacement fee for a container after you've already, so after you've gone through three containers, basically, you would have to pay a $65 fee.
Fair enough, as long as they're not the ones breaking it, because that's usually what happens.
So, yeah, Ray's right now is who is the HO, who does the trash for Eagles Nest, and I'm not sure if there's any other HOAs in the town that incorporate the trash. So, I would just like to run the numbers on that, too, and understand the impact for those residents in Eagles Nest and the HOA. Because what you're saying is Ray's is going to require Eagles Nest as well to be part of this if we sign it, right?
Yeah, you, you, every, it's either all or nothing because that's just the way it works.
Yeah, so they already have our neighborhood, so I'm sure it's gonna be equivalent, but I just want to check it out.
And we will, so we will be publishing notice, because this is essentially a rate, very similar to sewer or water rate. We will be publishing a notice, holding a public hearing at the August council meeting, and then, so, we'll, we'll have a public hearing where people can come and give more input as well on the particular rate.
If my HOA dues go down 150 bucks a year, then it's the same.
HOA dues are like taxes, sir.
Perhaps the HOA would be paying on behalf of their residents to us.
If our rate is cheaper than what Ray's is charging the HOA, I would say the HOA pays the town on behalf of all the residents. But we need, legal charges are, are being incurred, we, we need to know. I mean, if Eagles Nest says just no completely, we just need to drop the, we need to drop this.
Yeah, and I don't, and I'm not saying I'm for...
I understand.
I just wanna...
I understand.
Because that's just the new, new thing versus what we talked about last time, so...
It is new, but that's just the way, I mean, it makes sense. Because if all of a sudden, they've got three customers, they're gonna go, huh, that, you know, that rate doesn't work.
Yeah.
So...
Would there be an option if Eagles Nest says they're not going to participate, that we go back and rebid this and carve out Eagles Nest?
And...
Because this is a great deal for the rest of the residents, and I would hate to see it ruined because we have one HOA who won't cooperate. This is significantly lower than what I pay on a monthly basis, and it's far more service than what I get for my much higher payment on a monthly basis. I think it would be a great, I think it's great, we've talked about, we want to be conscious of our environment, we want to be green, and, you know, we need to lead the charge in recycling. Are you recycling in Eagles Nest?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Is it, is it every other week?
Yes. It's, it's exactly the same in my, of my understanding. It'll be exactly the same, the same company. That's why I'm thinking it's probably just the same, we just gotta figure it out, because I would hate to lose...
Because I would hate to lose this opportunity for the rest of the residents for one neighborhood.
As Steve explained, it is a lot more equivalent than what I was reading out of it with the extra container and all that stuff. So, it, it is a question, as Jeff said, that we can go in and look and see, because I don't have the budget in front of me to see how much we're paying and how much of that works out to equivalent to each resident.
It's a good point. I mean, you, you make good points. It is what it is.
If...
I love the idea of saving people money. I'm all for that, so...
I do, too. This is, for everybody else, this is a huge, huge savings, and I wouldn't want to lose this opportunity for the rest of, rest of our residents.
All right, and I'm, I'm...
So, if we have to carve them out, let's at least approach that as well.
If the, if residents decide that this is the way to go, but they want to leave it with the HOA and have the HOA pay you, can we work that out?
Yeah, that's, I don't think it really matters who's...
Where people, you know, they're paying a one HOA fee a year, they're not worried about trash.
Wouldn't that be difficult for the utility bill, though?
Well, the way we would be doing the billing, it would be, but...
We, we can get there. We need to work with the HOA and make sure that we, we could get there, though, if that's what they wanted.
I'm not guaranteeing that's what the HOA would want to do. They may want to say, "Fine, just, we're just gonna give it to the town." And for those that are not aware, there's actually two HOAs down there.
Yes, you're right. You're right.
So...
Well, I completely understand. I mean, I, this is why we, we as a staff, on the staff council action forum, said, "Let's just have a first read, take 30 days, go do some research." We've done a little bit of research on asking people in other areas of the town how much you're paying, and I don't think we've heard $31.80 yet, ever. It's been in the 44 to $60 range, depending on who you have and when you signed up and who has what deal, and it's kind of, they're kind of like the cable companies. For three months, you get $25, and then you get $65 for the rest of the year, so...
And if, and the final thing, and this, I'm sure, would be fine, if, say, Eagles Nest HOA said, "Fine, we're gonna give this to the town," can we negotiate the date if they've already paid that upfront fee for the year or whatever?
Yeah, that's, I'm sure that's not difficult to do. I mean, we could start it, we could, I guess we could talk to Ray's and see if we start it when you're, is your calendar year?
Yeah, we're on a calendar year.
I don't know what Ray would say, but...
I think others would prefer it to start quicker than that, though, from what Susan's saying, and I don't, I don't blame them. I'm, I'm not out to try to hurt the rest of the town.
No, we, completely understand.
We don't want to lose the opportunity.
Completely, completely understand, so. I'd suggest we talk about it for 30 days. You all do some research. We'll do some research on a staff level, so...
Will somebody do a first read?
I do.
You did? Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to have a public hearing for ordinance 2017-28, and that is an additional appropriation ordinance. We're appropriating more money, $215,000 for the general fund and other services and charges, and $150,000 in capital outlays, for a total of $365,000. And at this time, I will open up the public hearing on ordinance 2017-28. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to come, come forward and speak on the ordinance?
Mr. President, I think that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Public hearing is closed, five to zero. Letter D is ordinance 2017-28.
Additional appropriation reduction ordinance number 2017-28. General fund, increase other services and charges, $215,000, capital outlays, $150,000. Total for the general fund, $365,000.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance 2017-28.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended, five to zero.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt additional appropriation reductions ordinance number 2017-28.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Next is AD under New Business, ordinance 2017-29.
Ordinance, transfer of appropriation ordinance, ordinance number 2017-29. Increase appropriation, personal services, commercial spectrum, $30,000. Decrease appropriation, professional services, $30,000.
Mr. President, I would make a recommendation, or make a motion we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance 2017-29.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended, five to zero.
Transfer of appropriation ordinance, ordinance, ordinance number 2017-29. Mr. President, I make a motion we adopt transfer of appropriation ordinance, ordinance number 2017-29.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Up next is letter 8F under New Business, consider low bid and notice proceed for the Whitestown Parkway Improvement Project. Dax? Or Jason?
So, this is the ban, if you remember correctly, the Maple Grove Ban. The Whitestown Parkway Improvement Project is a milling and resurfacing of Whitestown Parkway from essentially Circle K to Stonegate Drive. Will include the construction of a side path from the Stonegate entrance past West Haven to the crosswalk here at the corner of Veterans Drive and Whitestown Parkway. Also includes the construction of sidewalks here on Boutwell Drive, on the north side of Boutwell Drive, past the complex, um, and on to, just, just right here, the connect, you know, crosswalk, back, go back over to the south side of the street and head on to the west. So, that would be that. Project, the low bids came in, very good number. I think engineers' estimates were six, about 650, something like that. Uh, low bid was 505, 505,000, and that was, um, uh, who got this bid? I can't remember, was it Hardy?
That was Grady Brothers.
Oh, Grady Brothers got this bid.
I would ask if you could put in maybe 530 in case we come across anything and need to change orders.
Not that we ever find change orders necessary. Um, I would make a motion, Mr. President, that we award the proposed project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Grady Brother, Grady Brothers, not to exceed 530,000, to allow for change orders. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. Up next, letter G, consider low bid and notice to proceed for summer paving projects.
So, this is the County Roads 700 East, from County Road 300 South to County Road 200 South. Uh, County Road 500 South, from just west of the bridge over Fishback Creek to Perryworth Road. What this does is it does two things. Uh, when we do an annexation and we promise to provide services, one of those services is to approve the roadways. Last July 4th, we were, we officially took over County Road 700 East to spend gravel for as long as it's been in existence. We don't like gravel roads in our jurisdiction, and we have made a pledge to get rid of those gravel roads. They're dusty, they're hard to maintain, they get nasty in the winter. So, within less, so within just about a year, um, when we took over this roadway, we'll have it paved. So, County Road 700 East will be, we'll, we'll have pavement. I think it'll be a very nice road. Um, County Road 500 South is kind of the last of the gravel roads in the annexed area of 2006. Um, we'll be very happy to have it gone. A lot of development there, a lot of housing, um, so to have it, it paved will be incredibly pleasing as well, so. Uh, low bid for, uh, this was, I'm going to have to have Jason help me out.
446.
396.
397.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have those in front of me. 396, I know, I'm a mess tonight. We got baseball games and all kinds of stuff. Sorry. Very good bid number, by the way. Again.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we award the low bidder project to Harding Group for the amount of 396,755.70 cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Didn't ask for a favor.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero.
My favorite part of that is the 70 cents at the end.
He said if we get into a change order on a gravel road, we have a problem, so.
Thank you. Up next is letter H, consider the waiving of permit fees for the Whitestown Habitat for Humanity Women's Build.
So, we're, uh, very excited to have a Habitat build once again in the community, uh, two in a, you know, 18-month time span. I believe this project will take place, Lauren can shout out if not, on Main Street, this time, South Main Street. Am I correct?
Yes, you're so.
604 South Main is a vacant lot currently. Um. Yeah. Corner of Prospect and, and, uh, Main Street. So, we're excited to have this. This is the women's build. Um, and we waived fees, uh, for the last build, and we just have to do the same for this one. And I don't know if I can get President Carter here to wield a hammer like he was in Canada, but if I can, I will.
As long as we don't put him in the hospital like what happened.
As long as we don't put him in the hospital.
I'd make a motion that we waive the permit fees for the Whitestown Habitat for Humanity Women's Build.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I, I certainly am going to approve this, but I'm curious is that if we could put some kind of process in place where we can, uh, put that authority down to our town, our town manager to waive these fees in these kind of situations?
So, Lauren and I have been working on this, has been working on the, the, the fee structure for some time. Lauren's talked to a couple consultants, and the writing, the rewriting of the ordinance language would be a part of that. Uh, it's not something that is unique. We've talked about this internally. It would be nice, uh, maybe if we say, I can understand why we wouldn't do it blanket, because we don't want to waive fees that you have enacted, that you take. But for, certainly for not-for-profit organizations or a special project, where we would have to notify you, and maybe the town council president could approve, as opposed to going through the entire body and waiting 30 days. I think that'd be a good language change, and I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Okay. Something to consider in the future.
We'll, we'll bring you some language on, uh, for the August meeting. It's a good idea.
And that parcel had previously had water and sewer, so there will be no need for additional capacity fees. It had already been a homeowner, and the house was torn down, so those would have been paid.
Yeah, I think we're, yes, correct.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. All right, up next, we have letter I, which is to discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for the extension of the 2017 Employee Wellness Program. And before we get started, we have someone signed up to speak on, on, uh, this item, Brendan Cavanal.
Thank you, Town Council. Uh, my name is Brendan Cavanal. Good to see you again tonight. Uh, I wanted to, uh, voice my favor of the employee wellness program. It, uh, it will help out the town, uh, provide a good example for everybody, hopefully. Um, my only question and concern is, um, uh, with this compared to other employee wellness programs that I have seen, experienced, et cetera, um, where it's a reimbursement-type deal versus a, uh, contract bid unless it's a in-house type gym. I think like Google has some of those. Um, uh, so if there was any consideration for something like that. Also a question about, uh, whether there has been a bidding process for, uh, the Whitestown, um, uh, gyms and other activity folks. I know there's one that happens here. Uh, there's the Excel Fitness there, um, as opposed to the current vendor that is out of town, uh, that's in Zionville, I believe. And, uh, I was also hoping that there would be a, a tracking system to see if there is a, uh, to see how much value the people are actually using it versus, um, it just looks good for insurance purposes, and we're throwing money. We like to be fiscally responsible here. You guys, uh, have expressed that multiple times. I appreciate that. It's all our money that you're spending. And, uh, just, uh, hope you guys look into a few things to, uh, check everything out. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just make one, one comment that, uh, our insurance agent did, uh, maybe a month or two ago, come in and comment on how, you know, how this, this program is so great, and it's helping lower our rates. So, I mean, there, there is a return on investment here, uh, for, for what we're doing.
So, first, we do track, uh, every time an employee uses the program, it gets tracked. Um, so there is a tracking process. As you remember, the first time around, we did an incentive that if you actually showed up and you got extra $200 towards your HSA, we had to track it. Um, I, by the way, did not get the extra $200, because I did not stay on course. So, bad example. Is there a bidding process? Excel did submit a, a quote. There is, there does not have to be a bidding process for this. It's a professional service. But Excel did, uh, submit, theirs was substantially higher, um, than this. Uh, if we expand this next year, I'd suggest we do it again. Uh, we do another bidding process, and we could take in, um, uh, two things. Uh, the current facility is equipped to handle us, and they've brought in staff to do so. It's larger, it's a pretty large facility. Um, we have a lot of people flooding their facility. Um, it's somewhat cumbersome for them. Um, so we could, we could do anytime, uh, Hacker, Hacker's the hub and Excel again, if we choose to expand this for 2018. Uh, there was money placed in the budget, but I think we need to, if we're going to do that, we need to talk about it now and bring it to you in September or October. Um, this by far has been the, the cheapest. Um, that's, that's a, that's a, a membership for every insured employee, uh, $500 a month. If you do the math, we have 80 insured employees. Um, that's really cheap, okay? Um, and then the, the nine days, uh, of wellness program per week to do the, the continuation of the program. So, we've done some pretty good study on this. I received Excel's bid last week, um, and the comparison is a little different price-wise.
So, this is through the rest of the year?
This would be the remainder of the year, correct. So, 500 a month for the membership, 540 a month for the actual fitness program. So, not only do our employees.
All the classes that you.
All the classes. So, not only do our employees get to go take advantage of the classes, but then they get that membership, so if they want to go on their own, uh, they can do so.
Yeah, and I think it makes sense as long as people are using it, right? So, that's all, I believe, Brandon, is just wants to make sure people are using it if we're going to spend the money, and I think it's great.
You know, it actually, I would say it improved morale. Uh, the fire department especially, I don't know if Chief's still here, but Chief Craft, you, I mean, it would, I would, would you agree? It was well attended, and we all kind of got a little closer.
I definitely messaged anywhere, you know, that you're involved.
I've had some police officers, uh, email me as well and say, hey, where is this, so we can continue this on. Good questions, though. Um, but I think we've done our homework pretty well here. Uh, hopefully it'll save us some money when we come back around to renew, since we're self-insured, so.
Yeah, well, if people are happy and people are using it and it's saving us money, then that's the trifecta, so.
I'll just continue to voice my support, as I've done in multiple instances up to now, that this is something that's good for the employees, not only physical health, for their mental health, and with employees with better mental health day-to-day, they're going to be better employees, they're going to be happier employees. This is something that's good for the town, tracking it, it's being taken advantage of, and we're already seeing return on investment, as our insurance agent stated just the previous meeting. So, I continue to appreciate these coming for us, and we'll continue to support them.
Mr. President, I make the motion that we approve the extension and the expense of $6,240 for the wellness program.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have letter J, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000, Eagles Nest speed radar signs, and we do have someone signed up to speak on this item, Brendan Cavanal.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Brendan Cavanal again. Um, as an Eagles Nest resident, I appreciate you, um, putting some, uh, forethought into our neighborhood for speeders. Um, I know there are a couple very vocal in our neighborhood that, um, can kind of keep track on the signs that we do have. Uh, my only question is, has any other speed-limiting devices been considered? Um, we already have three signs, I think it is, uh, two or three signs at least, um, whether if there were other speed-control measures that were possibly considered, speed bumps, humps, roads, stuff like that. Um, the signs are nice, but it also is kind of like a tally sheet of like, oh, cool, high score, um, some, for sometimes, uh, it seems like. Uh, so, I, I appreciate it. Uh, thank you again, and I thank the officers that help patrol the, the neighborhood for such speed.
The term I think you're looking for is traffic common. And we, and just, because I have done some research on this, you know, there are multiple things. Most of them, uh, require a study and are much more expensive. This is one of the least expensive ones to do.
Okay.
Other than, of course, traffic monitoring by the police department, which we've also requested.
I just see 20,000 for some signs. Uh, I would think some mounded-up asphalt would be almost as, as, you know, effective and long-term.
So, we, we have actually, our town manager has looked at all of the options that are available to, uh, to assist with slowing people down in neighborhoods, and I know Chief Anderson has, has been involved with that in various times in the past, also. Uh, I know there, there are various things you can do, and I know the one thing that, that we typically haven't been in favor of is putting in speed bumps, because it caught, number one, it causes problems, uh, for our people when they're, uh, plowing the snow in the winter.
If you look at the, the speed and stop sign studies that we did for Walker Farms in 2015, which they're on our website, um, the very last thing an engineer would suggest is a speed hump. Speed bumps are rarely ever discussed, because when you're having a heart attack, and that ambulance is on the way to get you, they've got a brake to go over that speed bump. And it may not, you may not think it takes a tremendous amount of time, but it takes a tremendous amount of time, number one. Number two, those aren't as inexpensive as you think they are. They're probably just about as much money to, to place in, uh, as these speed radar signs are. Um, number three, when you're plowing snow, and that snowplow hits that speed bump, it, it's going to tear up the snowplows, it's likely going to start to tear up the speed bumps. You drive, you go find me any neighborhood in, in Boone County that has speed bumps or speed humps. There are a couple. There are, there, I think there's like two. Um, there was a neighborhood in Brownsburg that recently, uh, that put in speed bumps, I think. Uh, it may have been a hump, but they took them out almost the very next year, because the snowplows were getting, uh, damaged, and people, the residents finally said, I'm so sick and tired of breaking every single time I have to drive these. Um, very rare you find speed bumps in a neighborhood, very rare. Um, for all the reasons that we just said, and very rare that you see a engineer in a traffic study, uh, highly recommend those devices. Speed humps you could, but speed humps are designed to safely travel over at between 20 and 30 miles per hour. So, if we're trying to stop people from going over 20 miles an hour, speed hump becomes pointless, because people, the first, they first drive it, they'll slow down, then they'll realize, oh, this is very similar to a railroad track. I can easily cross this at 25, 30 miles an hour, I don't need to slow down. You know, ultimately, there's two things. You, you, people have to wake up and be courteous. Uh, there's no, I don't think the government can do anything to do that. Um, enforcement, and, but I understand why Chief, Chief has a program and a plan. The problem with enforcement is, the second that somebody gets pulled over in your neighborhood for going, what, 23 in a 20? The five of you are going to get a lot of really neat emails, and so am I. Uh, when you're, when you become that person, you're going to get a lot of emails. Should we, does that mean we shouldn't enforce speed limits in neighborhoods? No, that's not what I'm saying. This is a tricky animal. Um, and so, we think that, I know every time I'm driving down Main Street, I was, I did it two nights ago, I hope the PD aren't listening, I found myself at the speed radar sign was flashing at me at 41 in a 30. And what did I do? I went, uh-oh, hit the brakes, and of course, my wife goes, you better make sure that flash is 30. Um, but which what we do, we, we, we want to make it go 30 when we're in a blue-plated car, a municipal vehicle. Uh, it even helps us in the municipal vehicles, because especially if somebody's following you, you look in the rearview mirror and you think you're an example in a municipally-plated vehicle, and you make sure that you are going 30 miles an hour because of that speed radar sign. Um, it, it just is a supplement to your speed, to your speedometer. So, those courteous drivers who really do care about their, their fellow neighbors, when they see that flash and it's flashing 25 in a 20, I would, I would say that they probably slow down. probably slow down. Drivers that just don't care, we could probably put as many speed bumps in as we want to, and what they do is they drive up fast to the speed bump, they go over it, they'd be so angry when they're over it, and they'd fly back, right back up to the next speed bump. So, we know this is a difficult animal. It's hard to stop, as you and I have had this conversation multiple times.
Hey, Chief Anderson, do you want to add anything since, since this impacts your world?
One of the things that I would remind the council of is, if you recall back in 2010 and 2011, we added six additional speed-limit signs to Indianapolis Road, six north of Whitestown Parkway, six south of Whitestown Parkway, because of the number of speeding violations that we were having. And what we actually found happened is, in the months preceding those signs going up, we wrote more speeding violations for speeding on Indianapolis Road. Speeding is a self-correcting problem. It has to be an individual problem, and we can dump officers into communities for extended periods of time and write, like was demonstrated here or example earlier, 23 into 20, and you and I are going to get lots of emails from concerned people about, well, I didn't mean me, I meant you needed to write them. And so, as much as I like having the signs in place, the signs do serve as a reminder for good drivers. It doesn't matter if you put 50 signs on that street, if a bad driver is going to drive bad, he's going to drive bad. And so, it's, it's finding that, striking that balance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Wishick, do you, do you want to make any comments here since your name was on the-
Yeah, so, I've had just multiple people reach out to me and I've talked to Dax about the subject and a little bit to Jason via email. And this was the best recommendation that they could come to try to bring it aware, make, make people aware to slow down that maybe aren't paying attention. So, without, there's no guarantees and there's never a guarantee, but the idea is to try to, in two sections, in two intersections, just bring a little more awareness in the neighborhood. And then, there's also going to be a speed study at one intersection as well that's going to help with a lot of data on top of all that.
We're conducting the same study we did in Walker Farms when, when the resident in Walker Farms asked for a sign at Tartan Trail and, and Green Glade. We did a similar speed and stop sign study, much cheaper than a full-blown traffic study, about $2,200 to $2,500. It's already been ordered. Not trying to prognosticate, but we believe that it will come back and warrant a sign. These, these studies that are done prior to development, being built, are really pretty good. You have to have a high volume of traffic to warrant a sign. If, if Tartan Trail and Green Glade don't warrant a sign, it's very likely that most other places won't. But what it'll do at least is it'll tell us exactly what the Walker Farms study said, which number one was enforcement, number two was a suggested speed radar-type sign, and then so on and so forth, so. That's where we are today. When we put the three signs in, Eagle's Nest has three speed radar signs. We originally had four in there and we took one out because neighbors, quite frankly, we'd put one in play, we'd knock on a door and put one in place and were told, we don't want that thing here and it's ugly and-
Right, if I recall, there were some-
Maybe it was in front of my house.
Now, it's in front of-
There were some pretty nasty emails going to you and Jason.
In front of councilperson Austin's home. So, when we look at placing those also, we look at placing them on long stretches. You know, placing them right at an intersection is pointless because nobody's going fast anyway. So, we look at placing them on long stretches, and so we tried to find those, the first time around Eagle's Nest, we tried to find those long stretches. Number two, and I know you and I have talked about four, we were talking the last couple of days internally about is four too many, because here's why. If we start to saturate with these things, do they really do become novelty at that point? So, maybe we start with two. That would give Eagle's Nest five. Walker Farms has eight, the north side has six. That may be a little bit of overkill. And then, the south side, Indigo Blue, has two. Obviously, Walker Farms is tremendously larger than Eagle's Nest. Two would bring you to five. And so, we were trying to find out where those two would go today to make it a good fit and work well for the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm open to really anything that will try to help. It doesn't need to be all or nothing, it's, could be in stages.
So, maybe we do two in stages and that, what I would ask is if you, if you and Councilman Russell could help us with the neighbors this time, so that, I mean, it's, it's hard, when we find a location to place them, and then somebody says, I don't want it shining in my house, or I don't want to see the strobe, or it's ugly and it might detract from property values and so on and so forth. And we had the same problem in Walker Farms as well, we had to move one sign a couple of times. Now, we, we did go up front, we went door-to-door prior to, to placement. But it's hard when we have to start moving them because then they become less effective if they're not in really the right spots. So, if you could help us?
Okay, Dax, can I, since we talked about four signs, and I'm not disagreeing yet with Eagle's Nest, could we get a couple of those signs, and they're the smaller speed-limit size signs, not the big message board signs, where we set them up, where they can be put in temporary places around, around the town where we can perceive, and I'll think of the perfect example, we got that bypass that's going in because of the sewer project that's putting people on county roads that they wouldn't normally be on.
Certainly, I would, certainly-
Where we could use these in different spots around the town at, at different times?
It's not a bad idea, and we have the, of course, we have the signboards that have a radar function on them. And quite frankly, we need to probably buy two more signboards as well. Those signboards are going everywhere and getting used heavily. There are other communities that have those temporary, they have, you know, speed radar signs that are on a temporary pole that they set down, they sandbag them and set them into places.
I don't think people are going to be too fond of seeing-
No, he's talking more like on a, like in a construction site, like on 200 South now. It's not, it's not necessarily a bad idea because you've got a lot of traffic that's going to be on 200 South now that's not normally on 200 South. I, I see what you're saying. You see what you're saying.
You're not saying to put these in the neighborhood?
No, 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 place them, place them like on Indianapolis Road, new construction sites. Anyway, back to, I know you, we've had, I mean, we're probably on our five, six, seven, eight hours talking about this, right? So, we could find the two locations, you could help us see if those work and then determine, hey, is it, is it helping? Do we do two more?
I'd say we take, we just take some baby steps here and put two in wherever you guys think is most appropriate, and you guys help find the locations where neighbors are okay with them.
Yeah, I, I like that approach. I think that's great, so.
One thing the neighborhoods don't have, I don't think, are the, the signs that say slow down, the yellow warning signs that say slow, slow down, drive slow.
We have one, it doesn't work.
Okay, never mind.
We got a lot of the green guys with the flags out, for the kids at play, but-
I just, trust me, we as staff completely understand the situation. As you know, it's just hard to, how fast did you go on the interstate today? Did you drive on the interstate?
Uh, no, I don't.
I'm putting you on the spot.
I don't drive on the interstate.
I did, and I was forced to go about 85 miles an hour in the fast lane today and 65.
Indianapolis Road, though, south, before I get into Whitestown.
Yeah, don't tell us how fast you went.
You were forced?
Right.
Well, it said I had to get over. There's a law now, so I had to drive fast, get over.
Oh, interesting.
Blue plated vehicles?
No, it was not in a blue plated vehicle, sorry.
This is on livestream. We're being recorded here.
I'm sorry that I said something. Is the baseball game on?
You gotta play it back in.
You meant to say you were driving the speed limit, right?
That's what I meant to say.
This, this says 20 on the paper, but on the ordinance, or on the action form, it said 12.
Well, I originally thought if we did four, we may want to do a not-to-exceed in case we wanted to do a, a couple more. Now, if we do two, I'd say we just keep it at the expense of the two, determine if they work. Now, I would suggest that, that Main Street, as it goes through the legacy core, needs some as well. Pier Street has them. But we're under construction, we're torn up, likely wouldn't want to do that till next year anyway, so. It was just kind of a, the 20 was more of if we got into a deeper discussion about this and determined, hey, let's get, you know, two more.
So, what's the dollar amount for Councilman Wishick's motion?
About $3,000 apiece, so about $6,000 for two, about $6,000 for two.
Make a motion, we approve the expenditure of $6,000 for two more flashing speed limit signs in Eagle's Nest.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero.
And in light of that-
Thank you, everybody.
Please keep in mind that school starts in three weeks. Zionsville starts back on August 8th, Lebanon starts back on August 10th, and children are going to be out in the streets in different hours. So, please, please up patrols.
Can you have your trailer to remind everybody that school's back in? That sign trailer.
Signboards will be out after. Light out.
Thank you, everybody.
It's been good conversations.
You said something about the message boards. Will you want to ask for them now, or?
No, I don't think we have them priced, but certainly we need to talk about it for either the end of the year or beginning of next.
Okay, next up was item K, which I should have said let's table.
Oh. I move to table item K.
So, move, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries four to zero. Somebody stepped away. Okay, so then we get to item L. See, that's why I started. The Parks Master Plan Update Proposal from HWC, and Nathan's already on his way up.
Yes, our Parks Master Plan is due in January, which is, gets approved and goes through the process with DNR and gets approval in April of next year. It is something I included in my 2018 budget, so if that budget gets approved, it has been taken into account into it, but we kind of need to start the process now because it is a six-month process. After talks with HWC, since they have done our, are doing our current bike-ped master plan, our transportation plan, it really reduces the cost on this because they have those plans in place, so it just becomes a greenways add-on to those current plans. And then, we know everything goes from our comp plan to our transportation plan to our bike-ped, to our park master plan. Dax had talked about maybe earmarking some funds from a different account for this currently, and it is in my 2018 budget, which is when we would pay for these funds because it's submitted in January and approved in April. So, I would hope that my budget, this will be one thing I'll really say that we need to move forward with in the budget next year, one of the hotter items, but, so it's in front of you for approval to move forward with the contract with HWC to do the redo our five-year master plan.
Do you have any monies in this year's budget to help pay for this since it starts this year?
The money for this is actually, that I do have for this year is falling into letter M that's coming next, which is the professional fees.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions, just want to reinforce the connection between the comprehensive plan and all the other documents. I mean, one thing we were going through, the comp plan rewrite, was making sure that all of our master plans tie together and work together. So, I'm glad to hear that that's already on the forefront and that you'll be keeping, with using HWC, we'll be able to keep more of the plan department on the same page, so thank you for that. And I would move that we approve the proposal for HWC not-to-exceed $24,500.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Next item is item M, the Park and Trail Engineering Service Proposal.
Yes, this one comes for you. I was asked to, with, in regards to the basketball and tennis courts, look at another site, and there's some other developments of maybe some private money coming into a park, which I don't know if you want to speak on any of that, or we just leave it at that?
So, we're, a developer is currently going to ask you all to issue some bonds that the developer will buy and guarantee. As part of that process, we have asked the developer if they would take some proceeds of those bonds and help us to build essentially a new park of sorts with tennis courts, basketball courts, Nathan going up further, shelter and whatnot. I think it'd be a great amenity for the neighbors, I think they've been asking for it. It'd be a great partnership between the development community and the town, so.
So, with this proposal, we started down the process of designing and setting everything for and approved the contract to go with the design fees to set the plan for Walker Park. So, we're at a certain point in that one, we're kind of putting that on hold to get this plan that we can present to council that shows pricing and work with this developer if it goes through. This park would include a shelter with restrooms, playground structure, Whitestown's first splashpad, which is in our impact fee master plan that we need to do at some point. And then, it would include the three tennis courts, two adult, one child, and two basketball plus parking. And with it, it would bring us current with every item in our impact fees with our current facilities, the 15-acre park coming on, and this park would put us at the bar. And when we went into those five-year study, we were actually at a major deficit, so. And I'd have money and professional fees to pay for this item in this year's budget.
So, a question that I have is, did we as a group agree that we were going to turn the seven acres into only a park? Did we decide as a group that we're no longer going to pursue this as building anything on it?
This wouldn't take up all of the acreage. Certainly would, this would be more towards the southern end of the lot, wouldn't necessarily take up all the acreage.
How does this work out with the power lines that are rolling?
Uh, doesn't, power lines wouldn't affect it. When we sent out a request for a meeting to talk about building a police station on the site, it was met with what I figured it would be met, sorry, what I figured it would be met with and, which was not a favorable response. What the response was, can we have park facilities there? Can we have a basketball court there? Can we have splashpad there and trails and walking? We think that we can do that, and if we choose to build a facility there in the future, that there's still enough room to do both. But we've got to have this proposal to have the engineers draw it up so we can see what it looks like at Walker Park and what it looks like at, on the seven acres. Anywhere else in town, as we're finding out with the fire station and the police station and other areas, is land is out of control. And this is, these are the two places that we think best fit for these type of town facilities at this current moment. Will there be more in the future at other areas of the town? Yes. We think that we can do this and the possible later construction as well.
I think this is a great use of that.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but the way it read to me was that it was a master plan of the entire seven acres for all park. So, that's why I wanted to make sure. So that's why I wanted to make sure.
It could, yes. So you, you would see a park, you would see a plan for a park on the seven acres. You wouldn't have to do that. Certainly, you would not have to do that.
But then we'd be redoing it, paying to have it redone.
The outside of the courts and everything would just be cleaning it up as green space to be maintained as nice green space versus we go out once every four to six weeks and bush hog it. It would be how to maintain this, put in if wells need made or whatever to keep the area looking nice to, to become more of a park instead of just building some courts and six feet over, we're bush hogging four acres.
It's more nice green space, kind of like Walker Park has all those green spaces, opposed
What's the funding source for this?
The current parks budget has money and professional fees that can cover the contract.
And you don't have that earmarked for anything else?
No.
Okay.
And this is the seventy-one fifty? Is that what it is?
Yes.
This would be back in time for the August meeting, is that correct?
Uh, they, uh, the prelim should be back in by the August. They do believe they can have it by the August meeting.
Well, it says final plans submitted to town within twenty-eight days from now, just to proceed.
Yes, which isn't in time for the August, but they're going to push to try and have it by the August, because our meeting's in three weeks.
I would make a motion that we approve the expenditure of Not to Exceed $24,500 for Shrewsbury.
Second. You've got a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Thank you.
Motion is adopted five to zero. Which one are we on?
N.
Letter in, temporary road closure?
It's in, it should be in your stack, Carrie.
It was not.
It's the closure of Boutwell Drive for the Boone Flavor Fest on September fifteenth through the Brew Fest on September sixteenth. Boone Flavor Fest is a family-friendly version that uses food samples, that would have one to dollar, one to two dollar food samples, and you could also purchase larger, and we've been working on with the EDC. We've talked about doing a concert the night before. The CBB is paying to have, for the stage to be here. We have the Flying Toasters will be on stage, and we'll have approximately thirty area restaurants that have one to two dollar food samples, so people can go around and kind of graze through food samples.
How many vendors do we have for the Flavor Fest?
That's what we're looking for. We plan on thirty. We've met with the EDC and the Boone County Chamber, and we're hoping for thirty food vendors to be at the Flavor Fest, so then you can just go around and buy one and two dollar samples. And we've talked to a lot of the local restaurants. They like the idea. Even next door's Flame Burger, they've said they've got a special grill, they'll do sliders on to hit the two dollar mark. Caplungers has a food truck, and they've, they've said they want to be at Brew Fest, and this would help entice them to do both and just park their mobile vehicle here for the... Two dollar samples are a little tougher for them, but they can figure something out.
But they're so good.
So this is the street closure for those, that weekend to close Boutwell Drive.
Mr. President, I would move we approve the petition for street closure.
Second. You've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero. I would entertain.
We should have had a no.
What, you, you want to get up here and talk?
No, sir.
All right. We will move on to the Town Administration Report, instead of adjourned, before you do your report.
What you have in front of you there, which is the last document in your packet, is, believe it or not, we have a resident who is refusing to grant easement to Vectren, so that natural gas can get to the Legacy Core. Yes, we're as shocked as you are. So in order to get gas to the Legacy Core, Vectren has issued a permit for working right of way. They do have to cut Main Street to do this. They will have to go at a ninety-degree angle, but it has to be done. Jason didn't want to sign the permit until you agreed. So, I don't know if it needs to be a motion, if we'll allow Jason to sign the permit. Typically, don't do this, but this is an odd one. We would typically just go ahead and sign a working right-of-way permit without your permission, but we thought this had been being a little strange. We'd go ahead and ask you to give us your blessing to sign the permit.
I make a motion, we authorize our director, uh, Whitestown Unisport.
Public Works.
Or whoever.
Jason.
Jason. To execute the document authorizing this.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero.
I have one, first thing I have is, if you remember correctly, we had committed to the county through an interlocal agreement to give the county two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the acquisition of right-of-way for the Connector Project. We want to fulfill our obligation and send that money to the county, and wanted you to, to...
We haven't sent it?
We have not sent it yet.
Then I make a motion, we write the check and send it certified registered mail to the county.
If you remember correctly, I...
For two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
I asked the county council about this. I think at their May meeting, I have heard nothing from the county council, and I think that we need to fulfill our obligation and send it in, so.
Let's fulfill our obligation and ask the clerk treasurer to cut that check and send it on Monday certified registered to the county for two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to fulfill our obligation.
Second.
I'll just add that this is something that we had worked on, we had approved it, we even went above and beyond the amount that we told the county we were going to match to make sure we fulfilled the twenty percent obligation, which was over what they originally estimated we would have to pay. To then have that approval, everything set forward, our cooperation in hand for them to terminate the interlocal, and refuse to talk to us about accepting our funds, to try and undermine our part of the project, has been frustrating, and I really hope that they will accept this, and we can put this project to bed.
If I'm remembering correctly, I believe they actually came here and asked us to increase our portion from a hundred and, whatever it was, a hundred and ten to two hundred and sixteen.
They did. It was a presentation by the Highway Superintendent Craig Parks, that he came and asked us to increase it, because even though land was being donated, and the, they could have used that donated land to run the, the bypass, they chose not to, because they didn't want to adjust any engineering. So that cost was because they didn't want to adjust to assist in reducing the costs in any way.
And at the end of the day, we fulfilled our obligation in appropriating the funds, approving dispersment of the funds, and then they would not receive the funds, because they terminate the interlocal less than a week after our meeting in which we approved that dispersment.
Steve, I believe the interlocal...
That interlocal is not yet terminated. They gave us the notification that they were terminating, but it was a six-month.
That's correct. So the interlocal still is in effect, so we're still obligated, number one. Number two, this road will be ours, via two, two methods, per the interlocal agreement and per state statute. So if it's going to be ours, we should put our skin in the game.
Can, Steve, can you explain the per state statute piece?
Yeah, by state statute, we have exclusive jurisdiction over all roads, streets and roads within our boundaries, and as I know Dax and I have discussed, for example, when we annex area, it was a county road before, it becomes under our exclusive jurisdiction after we annex it. In order for the county to even do work within our boundaries on a road, or to construct a new road like we have here, they have to have an interlocal agreement where we allow them to do that. And that's what we did here. We entered into an interlocal agreement, allowing them to do that, and the interlocal agreement, consistent with the state statute, says that when, if it's terminated for any reason, like the county has said they're going to do here, or even if it's not terminated, once the project is complete, the road falls under the town's jurisdiction, and the county must transfer the right-of-way to us. So even under the agreement itself, by terminating it, they still, they're allowed to complete the road. The idea was, we wouldn't terminate, or somebody wouldn't terminate the agreement in the middle, after they've already expended funds or got, got federal funds to do the project, they would be able to complete it. But still, termination, no termination, it doesn't matter. It's, it's our road, and it becomes under the town's exclusive jurisdiction, again by the statute and by the term, specific terms of the interlocal agreement.
And this is exactly like what has occurred with the other side of Albertus White Parkway. That was a county interlocal project to get that done, to get the bridge over the Dead Creek, legal drain, and then Whitestown, once it was completed, Whitestown executed its right to provide notice, and it is now our legally responsible road to maintain.
Correct. And that's the, when this road's completed, we will be responsible for maintaining it. It will be within our road inventory and treated like all the other roads within our jurisdiction.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero, so will, will you make sure that that goes out on Monday between the two, Abby?
One other thing to note is that I, I'm under...
Why not put it out tomorrow?
I'm under the understanding that, that there was not notification by the county to dispatch that three hundred South would be closed east of seven hundred east, so that there were no advanced preparations by emergency personnel to be able to get around in case of emergency. We've been lucky that we did not have an issue, but there was no notification, and that is unacceptable. And I want to commend the work being done by Great X, although it is teeth rattling, it is dusty, it is, it is picture breaking on the walls. The road is open, they're doing their very best, and they are being very conscientious, very dedicated to their work, and they're also just really being, being good, good workers in the area and trying to minimize any issues for the residents. And I'm, I'm sure, after the issues they've had just this week, that it's going to be smoother sailing down the road. So I, they should be commended for taking a couple of major hiccups and, and being very professional in handling them.
You're not going to throw that, are you?
I don't know. It was here when I got here. I'm not sure what's for.
Not the stapler.
You didn't bring the red stapler?
No, it was just here when I got here.
There's a story about the red stapler that I'll tell you all later. My second item is, in May, you all approved an additional appropriation, a fairly sizable additional appropriation. I sent you an email detailing where that money would go. One of those details had additional money to the EDC, contribution to the EDC, ten thousand from the town, additional ten thousand from the utility, increasing our contribution to the EDC to sixty thousand dollars a year from forty. That puts us in line with the contribution made by Zionsville, but it's a little less than the contribution made by Lebanon. Molly and her team are working hard for us. I have not, the utility has paid their funds, I have not paid ours, because exceeding five thousand dollars, I just haven't thought about it until now. It's sitting in professional services other. I would like to ask you if it's okay to move forward with that additional funding to the EDC.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero.
I have nothing further. I think we've given up.
Make a motion, we close.
Yes.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Meeting's adjourned at nine twenty-nine.
Pass that paperwork.